Where is your?
I forgot to put it down.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so no.
That's why they love that.
All right, you're ready? You're all set. All right, well. We will call the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the county may have only where appeals to order. It is six thirty-one again. Eastern Center time. Starting on the left, we have Warren. If you're looking for court, it's down that way.
No, no.
Nope.
No. Continuing. KP Kelly's. No relation.
No relation.
Debbie, our town secretary. Myself, I'm Tim Kelly, I'm the chairman. Then is our attorney. Harry and Claire. And then over in the corner is our multitasking. Going for some off your time. In his spare time, he's a Navy guy. So, all right, if everybody could kind of silence your phones. And then please stand. Yeah, we will do the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one eight hundred and eighty-four. Indivisible, with ever being. All right. Thank you. So tonight we have two appeals to hear. And decide whether to grant or deny the request for a variance based on the established zoning law. Board of each appeal separately, we'll hear from the applicant. Then there will be a time to hear from the public on that variance, and then we'll make our decision by voice vote. First, however, have the board members had a chance to review the minutes from last month.
Yes.
Yes. Any questions? Errors? Changes?
Make the motion have minutes accepted as written.
Sorry. All in favor? I oppose. Standing. Okay. Minutes are approved. All right, the legal notice for tonight's agenda was published. May have a motion to waive the reading of the application.
Make the motion to waive the reading of the.
Okay. Okay. Do that again. All in favor? I opposed. Right. Um, all right, and then at this time, can I request a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number one? I want a motion to open the hearing.
A second.
Very exciting. All in favor? I opposed. All right. So for the board tonight is Mark and Catherine Steins of fifty-one E D total lane. Badly art back map ID one oh four dot that zero nine dot one four dot zero. And they are looking to put in a garage. Structure. Due to the left side of their house. And they're looking for a variance, what's the amount?
They need. They need twelve feet.
Twelve feet eleven inches. I'm sorry, she's got mine.
Yeah.
That's okay. All right. Um. Mark, would you come up and you can go right to that podium and explain to the board what you're looking to do? And why you need to vary.
Well, thank you for hearing me out today. Um, we moved here a few months ago in July and after missing out on like three different houses here because we were out of towners. We couldn't get like bids, line bids essentially. We ended up, we ended up coming across fifty-one eighty-eight hopefully. For those of you guys from there, it's got a long backstory. Had we had a family living there. Had some fed- federal drug stuff all done there, but we're trying to make it a living home for us. As my wife and I and three, three little ones, seven to twelve. And then we moved my father in with us as well because it has a side house. So what I did was allow me not having to buy two houses so he had a place to live. Were able to combine the family together because he moved from California with us. So we're our only family down here, we're the only ones here by ourselves, et cetera. So when we did that, we kind of noticed the structure that we were buying had the side everything needed, but didn't have the proper right parking spaces for the winter camp. So we drove around the neighborhood, talked to neighbors. They said, you know, buy something that's similar. Look at the looks, we drove around, looked at all the different areas for garages, how they matched the house and stuff like that. Then we found a couple shed places that we talked to to try to see who could customize to make our, our, you know, our garage storage area for the hardcore. Match the house so that it would go with the match everything look like the neighborhood. We've stumbled across one of the poles, fixed two and a half, three ones to build it. So in that meantime, we started the process of building it to match the house. And also starting the process of getting to find out what permits, stuff we needed. Now, my dad is handicapped, he broken his ankle, had multiple neck surgeries, so long distance walking is tough around along the balance. So we're trying to put it next to it, so everybody's got an exhibit A, I'll call it. It's his door is right there. We built it specifically to have a door that comes out right there. And we matched the even the siding to go sideways to match the house. But it looks same colors, everything down. And essentially it would go on our. On our driveway. And his doorway would open up to put him right at his steps essentially. It would make an easy walk for him and give him storage, so we have a nice storage port for his car to park at the Garden City in the snow. Because for a fifty-six hundred square foot house, they only gave us two parking spots in the garage and then she got it with my wife and I parked, so we're trying to. Make it look good, make it accessible for him. And also make it easy on the family. We do have. Like I said, the variance, it stays on our property line, but yes, it is close to the variance we have. My dad did a drawing, measured it out for you guys, we can pass out as well. That tells how much feet we have, I think it's twenty inches from the end of it. End of the story unit or the parking. The car, car garage to the end of the where the grass is to where we have our property line. And it's about thirty feet from the actual house. We did talk to our neighbors. I've received a letter from both the neighbor across the street and the neighbor next to us that they would allow us to put it in there. Um, and so it's something we're trying to do to make it look with, with the town, so we're asking for the variance and make it. Sit on that property line. Anywhere else in the house that we tried to look at it, puts it further away or puts it in awkward. Travel situations for him to get in and out of the, his, his entrance of the house. Um, I asked for you to look at that in that aspect for us, please. That we were trying to do this for him, helping him make it easy and also keeping the town, that code is they supposed to be trying to looking, looking like everybody else around that neighborhood too, so. That is my. My, my tune in elevator speech, elevator speech, I guess, say I'm open for questions. And then you can help answer. My dad's got some additional information if you'd like to. Would rather him come up here and give that detail or wait till the question is either way.
I even haven't come up when we do the questions. Or he can sit right there too, you don't have. It's a small enough room, we can hear it.
I'd rather, would be standard.
Okay, whichever you're more comfortable with.
Uh, yeah, this is, I'm kind of embarrassed, it's, yeah, the inches and everything is totally accurate. And I'll explain it to you, but my drawing is not to scale and. The measurements are correct. I did have some. Fair remarks. But. Seeing how we're conducting a such an informal situation. I'm gonna. Go off the cuff and sure my off the cuff is gonna be a little bit shorter than what I had prepared, but I want to tell you what. Let me to to here, Bayville. Was. Sixty years ago. My wife. Was died. And two years into my marriage, she was diagnosed with. ovarian. Cancer. Or at sport stage. Anyway. So she battled that real hard and long. Got all the clear scans, the clear, get scans, the clear, everything is clear. And she started seeing her levels move a little bit. And. She stopped doing her chemo, the motion was finished. She's running with the way in. Very wonderful woman. And. So. Flew back into Russia of all places. And went to this. Place I call a starvation, you know, did nine days. No food, no water. And came back to look away in which I flew to meet her and to be with her. Cause she did this all on her own, couldn't stop her, like trying to stop a freight train. And then she gained her weight while I was there. Maybe that was a month or so. In between, and then she went back and she did it again, nine days, no food, no water. So finally, after that, she called me and said. You were right. You know, didn't, the treatment didn't do anything. And her blood levels. Were getting worse. And. I flew to New York to meet her halfway. And I held her head. All the way from New York to LAX and it was like a heavy bowling ball. So. Thirteen days in an emergency room. Four days at home and she, she was, she was good. And so. About two years after that. My good son, my only son. Said, he talked to everybody and wanted. We need to come live with them. Which on my left hand. I thought was great on my right hand. And I didn't know. So. I moved in with Mark. Moved twice to Mark, it's my third year with Mark and the family, and my three grandkids who. Otherwise they keep it going every day. Cause they're. They're awesome. So that's how I got to Bayville, Mark got a promotion, big promotion with this company. And was showing me all these houses. Says, well, I'm gonna buy you this house here for cash, so you don't have to worry about, and then we have this house, so then we came along the whole avenue last. And he said, you know, what do you think? He said, man, it's awesome. It's totally awesome. And where I am at. Apparently. Was the drug dealers baby mom. So I have everything. Everything there, I have the kitchen, I have the sinks, I have the cabinets, I have a little living room. Full bath. Bedroom. Side entrance says, Dad, if you find a friend, right in the side entrance, no problem. Which I have, yeah, but if you know anybody, anyway. So that's how I got here. And I know most of everything on this thing here, so I. I was building eight units long, long, long time ago when I was younger, I was with my father. So I did a lot of stuff, but never ever did a variance hearing, so this is my first one. And excuse me for getting emotional, but. Just like my third day. So.
And yet yesterday when you stopped by.
Yeah. And. Same.
They have their cupcakes, I did not say.
So, um. Like what Mark said, when we got here, we. You know, I just didn't really think about a whole lot. And then, like I said, everyone told us, well, we have these. Shit builders, which in the. One of the pictures, the brown one, the brown trim that you have, it's set on the right hand, that we're talking about high wall vehicle storage. Made. To store a vehicle, my vehicle. My vehicle's a California car, doesn't have an inch of rust tomorrow, going to the. Undercoats. And have it undercoated, but. But the whole deal was that. We did not understand, we weren't trying to do anything without a mess or anything like this, we did not understand. About, they were all telling us that it was no big deal, but you know, we came and we checked and we filed. But we were not aware that she has a fifteen foot setback on this, on the side of the house. Twenty-five to the Arizona. So that's not a thing. So. What we're talking about here is. My car, which is parked in the spot right now. Is on the drive. And the driveway. You know, naturally is all property. So. But we're talking about the shed. So this is from the neighbors. Nearest to us. That's, that's gonna be. This one is, sorry, sorry, this one is. Really there, so this is from the neighbor that's shooting towards our home. And so this is my car, so this is where the shed would be. They placed the cars. So the shed drops onto the property and your, your crew drawing that I just gave you. It would land about, I think it was ten inches from the edge of the driveway. And then. The little. Little dots, that's the grass, which let's make another eleven inches of grass there, so it stands twenty-one inches. From the, from the side of the shed to the property line. Um, my steps are forty inches wide and I used another four, four inches. You know, for, for, for again. So that's fifty-two inches and then you have twelve foot on the width, twenty-four, four on the length. That's, that's pretty much. The nuts and bolts unless I missed something here that you could think of.
Only, only thing that we mentioned earlier was. He, he does have issues with walking and stable stabilization. The guy's ladder from the doctor.
I do have, I do have a letter from my doctor during the manualist that I'm permanently disabled.
Now, we're driving, you know, we're trying to make it to get on there, and that's what we're. Spending in here, hoping to favor that we can get this through.
Now, I don't know because I know your attorney's sitting there and I have only just. Fast read the section. But I don't know if section five oh four applies to this particular installation and all, the disability that. But all we're saying is. We want to put a, put a storage unit. The same area, a little bit more that the cars parked on right now, which. This illegally parked on the driveway. And. We matched it like Mark said, to the colors, went to the shed builders, we didn't buy something off the lot, because this is custom built. By Mark, I mean by the, the shed builders, uh, this one's here in the hat. Buy a, buy storage unit, get a hat. So if you have. Any questions? Of me or anything that nature of.
All right. If you guys, if you want, you've been, you can stand there or you can. The back down, but we're gonna have the board. Ask some questions here, so. Certainly.
We open the public.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we did that at the beginning. Before you guys ask your questions too, I'm gonna read, I've got a letter that was given to us yesterday, they've also got a copy of it, this is from the neighbor in the house.
What was it?
The blue house. So. Uh, yes, yeah. Uh, so this is Lena and Samuel, they live at fifty-one ninety-six, so right next door. Um, it says, we're writing this letter to agree with you on putting a shed garage where you were proposing and hope this will provide an easy and safe access. If you're failing remember to his car. You and me agreed to put a six foot privacy fence up on the completion of installation of shed garage, however, this raises concern, the shed will be blocking. A mower or other vehicles access to your backyard, causing you to make an access to your backyard on the other side of your home. Um, I just want to read this before we ask your question. They're all ready. Uh, so we're asking to address this matter prior or by providing plans for making access to your backyard from the other side of your house, also. Uh, you will confirm installing six foot privacy fence from the stone wall to six foot extended from the entrance of the shed. To provide privacy, the fence should be installed on your property after both of property surveys are thoroughly examined by the towns. Those matters and concerns should be addressed so that we will be happy and have no other concern for the shed being installed. And that's signed by.
Can I add to that? Yeah. So she had never come to the other side of our house. So I walked him through that yesterday to show we have access. Cause one of the things says, show us access to get the mower, cause right now the mower guy drives driveway, he gets the back air.
You just have to cut through the brush.
Cause you have cut, cut brush, that's all it, we have, and you know, the other side of the house.
Trees and some, some brush there, they cleared that back, they would be able to get around it with a mower.
So that's nothing creative, just throwing artwork.
There's an area you can walk in now, but there's like a patio there.
Yeah.
So obviously they're not gonna go over that, and you have to. Cut in. For that brush. So anybody have a question about that letter? Okay, just as you were asking your question, I wanted you to do with that. All right.
I did want to, um, to state that there was a prior variance given on this. Side yard for the garage that was built. And. Right, which. Two thousand and sixteen.
Just right here.
Right, so there was. A side yard setback given of. A side yard setback, twelve feet instead of the fifteen feet, so it was basically a three foot variance. That's in place for the garage currently. I don't think it has any bearing on that, but I did want to know that it was that a variance had been previously given, that is expensive.
The variance that granted. Uh, because they wanted a side entrance garage. I remember that, I remember that. I've been on the board.
When the town's.
No, that's just. And they needed to bump off the house. A quarter or two to get some distance in the garage.
Yeah.
Now they turn around and. Back to the front, but. The variance still there. And I built that.
Well, and I, the reason, so Debbie looked this up for me, because I had asked her earlier about if. You know, because obviously the house has had a couple other variances because there's been. Multiple additions to that over the years, so I wanted to see what had already been there, just so we were.
Well, that. Like, that might be the only variance, we've been several.
But I think it was one on the other side. But that doesn't have very.
I thought that just been, just been.
No, it would have to have had a variance for it because of the side yard.
Yeah, but they, don't they have, you know, the fifteen foot on both sides on that, on that property?
Yeah. I think, I, I don't know. They would should be fifteen on that, but.
Did we give anyone the? What, what is the, what is the setback, the side setback, you don't tell me?
I'm looking that up right now.
It's a.
Yeah, that's the survey they gave us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fifteen one within there. All designs.
But that, again, doesn't have bearing on that side of the house, on the other side of the house, so. Do you? What questions do you have?
I'm gonna start with my friend.
Start with Warren, or you wanna start the other side of the table?
Yeah.
That's. Can I start a crucial question as well, because this may just. An end to it, I don't know, Tom, but there is, there's a hold about. Far from the property line.
That was one of my questions, so. From my. When I did the review. On here, it was shown fourteen foot one for this section right here. And what that did is that put that in line, essentially making it so you have to be right to the stairs. You're showing almost eighteen feet for the property line. And I'm not, I don't believe that is correct. So. So if, if, if you put it. Right to your stairs, you would have two feet, one inch, and that's where, so that the twenty-one inches from the property line. What that brings it is. Walls within, with a minimum fire separation of zero feet at that one hour. The projections. Under two feet are not permitted. But a detached garage accessory to a dwelling located within two feet of a lot line are permitted to have. Roof eave projections not exceeding four inches, so the roof eave projection would not be able to be greater than four inches, which I do not know if the shed. Or the garage. Is constructed in that manner.
Well, I don't really have a bigger point on that, but as we talked about, I didn't think it was, but I could certainly get that information, that's true.
We did.
Oh, on the survey, just so you know, my, my Mr. Crew here is I, I told this to Tom and then I believe I told it to Warren. And then call. This company that did the actual surveys and the guy said, Gary, you go to the corner of the house and measure eighteen one, and that's where your property line is going to be. Which if you take what I had, going out the forty-eight for the stairs plus four plus the one forty-four. Uh, plus the twenty-one, leaving us to the property line, which asphalt driveway is two oh six. To the property line is two seventeen, it's fifty-eighteen one. So I just was out there with my shop again, or met Tom quite a while ago. And went over it again. And. I mean, it's, it's. It, it's just a bit probably within less, less than an inch. Or.
And even that rock drawing, that's not, that's on the outside of the cement. So.
Yeah, as I said, when I did this, I based it off a number that was pulled from there and then use. A straight edge to show that. If, if the property does go in or out in such a manner, that would have to be. That would have to be put on a survey by licensed surveyor for me to be able to pull that measurement, that's the only measurement I have to pull from. Cause he does not give a measurement from the rear of the property. Or the rear corner of the house right here to the property line.
Yeah, that's what he told me. Uh, the rear corner of the property. From there out to the eighteen one out to is the property line, but yeah, I, I, that's what he told me, Lord's bone, and it was to be. The one that did the survey. Uh, before we get all tied up. In. These inches and so on and so forth, I object to the small distance that's left. The two feet, twenty-one inches, whatever it is, I object to that. You can't get. At a safety point. Firemen. If there was a fire on that side of the house. They'd have to go all the way around the house to get to it. You need a minimum in my mind. And I don't think this is written in the text. But they need probably five, six, seven feet. To get your men and equipment to that side of the house. If there was a fire on that side of the house.
As it is right now, just, you know, two, so if they're putting that, if they were, if this was. That privacy fence, if they were to put that up.
Oh.
Behind it. That would, because you're right, that would block, you wouldn't be able to get around it with that privacy fence, but behind where that privacy fence would end. There's a, like an old stone wall. That's probably what a foot and a half tall. Yeah, just those. Like sleep. See all from the old days.
Yeah. Yeah.
Back when you started on.
Yeah.
There, but there is that, so if you go further back. There's access over that. But there's not right up front. And you'd have to, and it would only, the only way to egress on that would be through the neighbor's yard, right?
If the neighbor does not put a fence up. If the neighbor does not put a fence up, which they are entitled to do.
Correct.
But.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
I guess that comes into play where there's thirty two feet between the storage unit and thing, I I can see, I know. His property. I I understand. He's welcome to put sheds and everything else, you know. Well, yeah, we have a subdivision of the street here. And initially, when it was first built, you know, it was great. But now it's the firemen have a hard time getting around some of those houses because they are so tight. Now, obviously on whole wing, you don't have. You know, short distance between the house, but the idea is the same, you need access immediately, you know. You know, so.
That, that farm wall that I was mentioning is in that picture, the surveyor there. Like at the back of that driveway.
Oh, I see what they do, yeah, yeah. Then there was a, yeah. But to run around that house to get to that side of the house, the bedroom side. If there was a fire, we got a kitchen on that side, you know.
Yeah, that whole second, it's like a, it's like an apartment, basically, right? That part of the house here.
But it's it's more of the part of the garage down the backside, I'm in, I'm in the corner, that's me.
Yep, now, uh, the other thing is. One of our questions here is. And and I shouldn't be talking, I created a lot of these other people talk. But uh, there's plenty of room in the backyard to put that. Um. Yeah, in the backyard, so you don't need to use up that immediate space. With that garage. When you've got all the space in the backyard.
Well, do if you do for walking, cause you can't make that distance.
I understand it.
That's why I'm looking at the handicap exception, get that. Cause we're trying to make it so we don't fall on the way to his location.
Yeah, I understand it, yeah, he made that quite clear, that's, yeah.
Well, that just took a base up, we looked at the backyard, the distance and the way it was done now, I walked it with, speaking of you, we came out. Walked to the back, yeah, it was, it was dark, good, see, we kind of walked out there.
But those, those are my objections, I should be quiet and.
I understand, and that that walk is thirty five feet, I measured it.
If it's that important, you could also, you know, have possibly a rear door from that area out to the garage. That would be in your backyard. You could construct on the sole with. You could have, when I would come in and install the door. Go out the back, much the same as you got in the cell. I don't know. And again. Anyways. Let me be quiet. Who else got questions? I hope somebody else.
I I. Because I I I just have a crucial concern. Um about, about the measurements, right, so there's. Even before we get to the variance issue. Without a surveyor, like we're going, and I appreciate everybody sketches things, but when it's so close. And the, the dimensions, and we need a magnifying glass to see them, but. You've got a dimension on asphalt to the side of, you know, to this, a measurement of fourteen, fourteen point five.
Tom, can you pull this one up and do it best if you can? I don't know if that's gonna help us a lot, but.
Fourteen one.
That's what I figure out, we can't. So, look at the bu- um downs, keep going, I think it says fourteen point five. Went there, right, so that's, that's the only like real measurement we have, and then you have to follow, follow the plane, but that's not for us to. Do, to do or to figure out, and then the steps appear to have some kind of projection. Um, so. With, without that measurement, and it, and it's fairly. Recent, like Mr. Dussing, it's like this was made, he just bought the property. Needs to give a measurement to the furthest most projection of the stairs. Here.
Forty, forty, they're forty eight inches plus, like I said, I put another four inches there to not slam against the stair.
I think the question might be better asked if you, what is the setback? You get your garage door or dog, sorry, the side of your garage.
Right.
And then there's a little offset and.
There's, there's, yeah, yeah, it does jog, jog out a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so you know how much that jog is?
This one's three point nine inches. This one showed it pretty clear, did I read up here? Yeah, they should have.
That's what she did on that one.
Three point nine.
Yeah.
In that little corner, that's blurred out.
How much?
Right.
Three point nine, or three point nine inches. I don't know why that one's blurry, this one's pretty clear.
I might just buy hours, when I copy it, so sometimes you got like weird signals.
Where it is in.
Yeah.
Yeah, three, three.
The twenty seven and.
Three point nine, that's almost.
Yeah. Seven, what's almost fourteen?
That little jog coming back in, you got fourteen feet out from the front of the house, out to the property line.
It's pretty much in line with the steps. That's.
Which, which line?
So, right?
Is, is.
Three is three, three foot nine inches. Which I, I measured these steps.
Yeah, we can't measure the step, we've got like just the every side of the house on that, right?
Yeah.
So if you got fourteen feet from the front of the house to the property line.
There, there's no, there's no measurement.
That's eighteen and fourteen one, plus three point nine, eighteen, and then we have a little bit of grass on there.
The redder.
Yeah, it's a, they're copying, they have come during the. That's. This is three nine there. Fourteen one, so that's eighteen all over there, plus we have a little bit of grass on that.
Well, actually, the property line, the property line, then, from this plane of the house, is three point nine plus fourteen point three. A fourteen point three?
Yeah.
Oh, it's fourteen point three. Are these your? Measure that?
No.
The surveyor has this.
That's what we got from the rear, the attorney that didn't bomb the house.
Okay, cause none of that was, can you see on survey? If you could see the survey that we've been looking at? None of that, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not scalable.
Well, say it, even when you.
Well, so the, the step measurement is three point nine, so. The, it is fourteen point one. From the property line to the steps.
Oh, fourteen point one. Using your number, fourteen point one, plus the little jog was back in.
So that, yeah.
So you add that, and that's where they get their.
So, in this picture. So this here.
Does the asphalt go right?
About eight or two of the grass.
Oh, yes.
That's what he said, this is previous.
Ten inch, ten inch of the.
That's where, because they're putting it back here. Cause it's going back in this area. So it's after.
No.
Right?
No. From the house. To the end of the. Um, property line.
Side roughly. Eighteen.
Fourteen.
Eighteen, four five, seventeen.
Seventeen.
Eighteen. Yeah, fourteen point nine, just gonna point that. Eighteen. Eighteen, if we said eighteen. Three two one. Well. Because it's. It's a fourteen point three.
Fourteen point nine one.
Six point one.
Yeah, that math class.
And then you're talking with the, with the brass being ten inches, you're looking at eighteen eleven. Eighteen point one minus.
The structures fall a lot wider.
Yes, yes. Oh, here, the steps, you have to take out the steps which are measured, you guys can't see that.
Yeah.
The measurement is three point nine. The steps are three point nine, so it's fourteen point one.
No.
Plus the red now.
No, 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 this, cause again, you're, so, yeah.
This is, this is the house right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Fourteen point one was three point nine.
This right, we're, Tom, pull up. Pull up the house.
No, no, it's measured. She had little options, every member of the surveyors, measurements.
Jamie. So what they're saying, right, is it's fourteen one from here? Yeah, so the edge of the driveway plus.
Three point nine.
Nine inches there, correct.
And then the stairs three point nine.
The stairs are forty eight, yeah.
Not according, not according to this.
Well, again, you follow it.
Not according to this surveyor.
Now, Jim, can you go back to that story?
Plus nine. Twenty seven, four seven.
Well, even, even, even roughly speaking. If the stairs equals that. We're at fourteen, I mean.
Fourteen point one.
Right, fourteen point one. We got a twelve foot shed.
You follow the plane.
It leaves two foot, that leaves you a two foot difference.
And perfect.
If, the if.
For the code.
The shed is exactly the smack dab without any variation against the steps.
Right. The, you, you're still down about two feet.
And what is, what is it saying? Anything, anything less than.
Or that. I was.
You never said that can make your own. Well, it it's, there's two separate questions, one has to do with fire rating, not that.
Fire rating, Tom's right, you just gotta have that build, the whole building has to be, the whole building. Not just the one wall. The whole building has to have a one hour fire rate. Would that be the floor also, or just the walls, ceiling and?
I just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's the whole building.
Yeah, I. You bring up a good point, I don't know how the floors would be done, but it's something that, right, you could do, you could do party board on it or something.
Something, yeah.
And we have talked to him, we believe he wants to do that.
They, they only specify in here walls, projections, opening walls, and penetrations.
How do you want our?
If they are within, if it's within two.
How do you want out the fire rate to go up and over?
You don't.
Well, you could use it. The.
It can be running, it's got a fire rate.
No, what does not allow you is when you have. Open. If you are greater than, if you are less than three feet and you have openings in the walls, that is not allowed. If you have projections less than two feet, that is not allowed.
They can't, they can't have a door on this face of the house.
There is a door, that's how he would get in to get to the fire.
Right, but it's not allowed because of the one hour rate. It was, I don't know.
You're less than, you're greater than five feet on that side of the structure, though. That's all I would, right, cause if your property line is five feet, it would, that side of that portion of the. Shed would be past the five foot, so.
When you get to five. So it's gonna be past the steps, so it would be.
Four foot step.
Right, but where the door is, because of the way it's placed, it would be, there would be enough distance, you're right, from the house.
It wouldn't be a penetration within the five feet of the property line.
No, 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 it's way the house and the shed.
No, and there's the, there's the property line as well.
The, the fire rating wall. Is in relation to the existing house. To the shed.
No, walls of an individual dwelling unit and their accessory structures located on the same lot are an exception to. The fire resistant construction. Don't ask me how that came into the code, but that is exception, so section R three oh two fire resistant construction exterior walls. Construction, construction for projections, opening and penetration to exterior walls with dwellings and accessory buildings shall comply with table R three oh two. And then exception is number two is walls of individual dwelling units and their accessory structures located on the same lot.
Is an exception? Uh, okay.
I.
Okay.
It doesn't, so the, the main. Code question is for their garage in relation to the property line, that it would be. That that distance.
Right, but now, factor into that. The fence that the neighbor wants.
Yeah.
Right, running down the side of it, if you've only got two foot, one inch.
The matter what you.
That, that two foot one inch, though, we talked about, that does, that doesn't matter, you could literally be on the property line with the fence, right?
Yes, there's nothing for facts.
All of this on yours, your property.
So the advocate is looking for a two point one inch variance.
That is what he had stated during it.
That's what we think, I mean, it's for a, a variance that would allow for a two point one inch, I don't think that's, that's a realistic. I'm not talking about if you're gonna break, you're gonna, I'm just saying. The likelihood that that shed is going to smack dab hit the stairs. Is. Well, it's not permanently affects, seems unlikely, so if you're going to grant a variance, I think it would need to be. Something that would be realistic to state.
Well, when you.
That shed would be built smack dab at the stairs, now that we understand the measurements, now that I can actually see them. The likelihood is gonna be hitting it. Is slim to. So you're looking at, so basically this four inches, it's not, it's gonna have to be right here for sure, it's gonna be. So let's worry if we're not even. Right, if it's, if it's four inches, then the variance that's being requested. To, the variance to allow for a one point. You know, yeah. Eight. There, you know, allowing, that's something to be built one point eight feet from the property line. So that's, that's the variance, just to clarify, and sorry that it took so long to get to, because again, couldn't see everything on there.
All of that was in your coffee set.
I didn't realize that it was, there was even a number there, right, but best for something sooner. And I'm like, wow, there's a number there, okay, so.
That's why I didn't see what you were saying, so.
Um, yeah, so. That would be, that would be how close it would be to property line. So now the, the, so, what does that mean to that fire rating situation for you?
When I approved the permit, I would have to ensure that the detached garage. Accessory to the dwelling located within two feet of a lot line has a roof eve projection not exceeding four inches.
Then there would, would need to be a fire rating on that.
There would, that would, because. A projection less than two feet is not allowed at all, so if their shed or their garage. Comes in with projections exceeding four inches, I would not be able to approve it. As a structure, because.
If it's less than two feet.
Yes.
Yeah, well, you know, let's find in this picture here, there's no four A at all, no projection.
That is, yeah, I would just have, if, if that is the shed, if anything changes from that.
Or that you have the glue on.
That is, that is an objection that they could build guys. You, and you can see like the way it's built, they normally go up and down with the vinyl and stuff, we had it built to match the side of the house, side base.
Yeah, who built this?
North, cat, North Country's already. Yes. They're not considered by.
Yeah. We're good people.
Yeah, they are good people. Claire.
Is there a code about? Is there a code about how where you can put fences close to structures? How close?
Not that I'm currently aware of, most of the fencing codes come from local municipal law.
And basically, as long as it's on your property. They ask for.
On your property and out of the way.
They had, yeah, out of right of ways and, yeah. Um.
And the only reason they're asking.
They ask for a couple inches.
It's because they have two dogs, even though they have electrical fence. They're, they're, one of their kids, so like, the dog, you guys. But we have the rock fence, everything, our dogs have never bit anybody, their foot kids, their kids come to our house. They play with their dog, it's more of a.
So the fence will go to the stone, the stone line.
Maybe not, offer them if you want, we can look at taking the rocks out and make it a whole fence to clean it. But I said, they said, you get this in person, we'll we'll work with the.
So who's, who's incurring the cost of the fence?
I'll I'll take care of that.
Okay.
Tom, so you're still saying that it would have to be one hour harder for it?
Yes, yeah, there's no way around that, that I just wanted to.
Fire rate, that does have to be. And we we have no problem doing that, we talked to him about the drywall, what was the other one, you the hard fire card and the hardy board?
Something that is tested in accordance with A S E M E one one nine or U L two six three. I can send the links for those.
Well, I remember that.
Yeah, that that was. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Oh, yeah.
The the questions that we're, that, just in general, right, the criterion that we're gonna go through is. Um, is it compatible with the, you know, the neighborhood? Um, and if, you know, the fence is out, it's gonna be, it's gonna be swushed, it's gonna be a swushed block. But the neighbor won't see it. Um. And. We think only have. A foot to work with. In permanence. Which from what we just decided.
Defense is talking about, talking about putting the fence on their property.
Yes, on their property on the neighbor's side of the.
Right, between there and then in the blue house. So the two foot, it gets to be less.
But because it's offensive.
Well, it's offensive, it's okay, the fence can be.
You put it right on the property line, it don't matter.
But it's still, it's still. Mm hmm. Four or five inches wide.
Yeah.
Well, they're four by four plus materials, it's, you know, must be.
Four seconds.
Yeah, yeah, so. You know, I I just, um. Anyway.
If 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 this board would. Require the, would I say, okay, it's gonna be okay as long as there's a. Um. Fence, then it could be conditioned upon, the fence has to go up first, so. We're sure that the fence can be up, that could be a condition. Because you can put conditions on the variance. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out to let you know, that's what you could do. Um. And and then, it wants the fences up, if this doesn't fit, they'll have to rejitter it, so I don't really too, but. Um, then you say, yeah, you can you can have your your set back. Um, so that's one thing, I I haven't seen. This board, and I don't know in, you know, what neighborhoods. This has been. Um, permitted for to have a shed structure for garage. Um, it's not not allowed, but it all depends on the compatibility with the neighborhood, so that's something that should be discussed. Um, through the criteria as well.
Um, I would like to, in regards to that, is take your attention to this picture, I believe you all have one, if you don't have, we access.
Well, yeah.
And in the right hand corner, it says. High wall. Vehicle storage. It's not shed to put your mowers or your rakes in. For our.
I I understand, like, I I do have, I just, it's so close to the property line, it's gotta be exact. But then you're also saying, I mean. Am I, I'm just gonna say, like you said, the disabilities thing, you know, but I think that in order that our codes. It's pretty, it's pretty close, it's, it's pretty tight. And I don't. At putting a fence there, I mean, to go along with hope, there's not a lot of fences around that area. It's, you know, it's. That's also one of my, I mean, I will go through Hope all the time, and that neighborhood is, I well would, and just.
And and that's what we kind of mentioned, and that's the only reason she wanted that was for the dog, but we didn't, we never have it now before.
Yeah.
So it was kind of like a last minute thing, first it was the view, you not there, it's like, okay, I want a fence, like, that's what it's gonna make it easier for you, I guess. But, yeah, it'll only be a partial fence, so.
And I, and I think when you, if you were to put it, you were first to shut up, shed kind of.
It would kind of block.
Like, it would block the view. So I don't understand.
That that is a weird request, and what we said.
Well, and I understand, I, it it just, it just, I think.
Well, the neighbor is questioning.
Yeah, our.
Oh, and that's why you're saying it's a partial fence.
Yeah, if she only wants it from the beginning of the shed to the rocks.
Well, it it this board would decide what the property prices for the neighborhood, because that's all part of the variance.
Yeah.
But that's what we said, if she said, that's why she said she'll she'll allow it to get, what, trails through, and then we would work with her to find this motion. For a fence, so she has to see it.
To clarify what you just said, too, just based on what she's got written here. It says a six foot privacy fence from the stone wall. Two six foot extended from the entrance of the shed.
So that would be like.
Beyond those twenty four plus six feet.
But it's just not, it, that neighborhood, there's no fences around there, so that's why.
So that fence would be.
At least thirty feet long.
Yeah.
How much is it? Now that I. What's the distance from the steps to that offset? Where the garage start?
Where the where where it dips in?
Yes. Existing garage.
Yeah, where where it dips in at three point, what's the distance from that and steps?
Yeah.
Um, it is. I think the, clearly, you guys have the one I can read. I want to say we measured it the wrong.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Uh, because I was concerned. Okay, so I'm standing on my steps going down right hand.
Thirty two feet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because still with the twenty four foot length. He still had about six foot. For a fireman or whoever wanted to get in through the steps of our, our way, so he has about thirty two feet for what it is.
The size, fifty two minus. Thirty, yeah, minus. You got an answer.
No.
No, like the net got up.
It's just. Here to like this part.
Here to the step.
Technically, it's less than thirty two, because the the. Steps themselves, it's. That would be like, it looks like.
That would, that would include the going back to the.
It's like a.
Core at the back of the steps.
Yeah, oh, it includes steps, yes, all right, so you've got a landing, you've got how many steps? Uh, I think it's thirty three. Three, and it's three, you've got, you've got to take six, seven feet off. For that. So we take, say, seven feet off the thirty.
Two, yeah.
Thirty two. Um, you're down to, then you take the shed, the. But also the this, the shed would be. Back a little further from the landing. Any two or three, two or three feet in there. That would be back, because it, where where I had placed the shed, you see the ground lines here, you could go all the way to the end of the asphalt driveway. I went in, uh, about a couple inches. On the side and a couple inches in the back, so the shed lands right directly on some good firm asphalt. Um, and then, like I said, so it was, it was back, it was back to the end, very end of the driveway. I see what you saw. Your driveway will pass the steps.
Yes, and 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 the back of steps. Uh, let and.
I thought it went to the back of the house. No, no, that's, that's, that that would be part of the problem, the standard of location is to come down the steps. On the grass. Okay, yeah, okay, I thought it went further back from there. So. Warren.
Um. I've got a couple thoughts. Um, I don't, there's no fences anywhere around there, I'm just kidding. There's no. When I spoke with you, I asked you if the neighbors were okay, and you said yes, but you didn't say anything about it.
That came out after you left.
Yeah.
They they did, they did that yesterday. And I came out, came out, originally, they were, yes, we asked. They gave us that letter yesterday, that that wasn't spoken about until the evening about the six additional. So when we originally spoke to them and did all the research, they both said yes. And then we asked to go back to the letter. She's like, oh, what about this, and what about this, we walked through and how the how the mower would get around, all the stuff that she wrote in there was conversation, maybe that. What I said is to put this there, how the mower get to the back. I went to the back, so she kind of wrote a last minute letter, like, you showed up five minutes after, like, the letter got delivered to us.
I spoke to them. Um. You wanted to go to the backyard, you had to walk around the other side of the house.
Yes.
The. Big I.
They might, I mean, yes. Um, that's my main problem beside my neck, is my disabilities.
And and that entrance on the side is the only entrance to your apartment where you were.
Yes.
There's nothing into their house.
There, there is, right there, right there, I can go in the front door.
I'm sorry?
I can go in the front door.
Of their house. It's that to your house, there is a door.
And the door between your unit and theirs?
No, it is, I say, you go to our front door, you have.
But I can, I can open the door and go in, is what I'm saying, is I can go in the front door. No. Would be the long way around. No, is there a door between your unit and their unit?
Yeah, yes, in the house.
In the house?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's much, it's, it's up up three steps, and I I'm I'm in my, my, uh, my area of the house, my my room. My living room, and it'd be a big, a big hike to go through the front door. It was like when we saw it, I said, hey. Yeah, you can go right in the side door, got your own little entrance, the whole bit. And then I said, Mark, this is awesome house.
Oh, good for you, just because of. You ordered the shed before. Finding out you needed the variance, so.
Correctly, we, when we, when we went and talked to them, we did the difference, and we talked to them, and said, we go into the town, we popped to, and we showed them the thing. He said, oh, we've done, they hit, they hit barns in the area, go pop your city, it takes us two and a half months to build it. Like, they started building it to plan, and we came right in here and started asking questions.
That's the only letter we've received?
I got another one here from the neighbor across the street.
Yeah, this this also shows, um. Uh. Where the asphalt, sorry, where the asphalt ends.
This is, and Sean directly across.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it shows pretty clear.
Oh, it's in that.
That says from the neighbors across the street.
Correct, they were across, yeah.
Did you turn this one to Mary?
No, 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 we don't got, we, we got it sitting there, don't we?
Well, I talked to Debbie, she said we just bring him, so.
Okay, so this is, uh. Kathleen John Egan, the crowd crew fifteen eighty nine, hopefully. So those nights I could do the other night, we have no objections for the proposed placement of a shed on the left side of your house. If you have any further concerns or questions, please do not hesitate to reach out. And I'm gonna, is it okay if I? Give this to the.
And when we did it, I went the same day, I talked to them, I talked to, and she's like, yeah, no problem, and then we were following up, but the date got close. Can we get that letter, she's like, yeah, I started writing, so I write it. And then yesterday, the letter finally came. Um, after, you know, she gave her one night, said. Well, we're worried about the view from our kitchen. I said, you're good interior, and she said, yeah, it's like, it's really look, it's smaller than the house, she was thinking it's gonna be two stories, like, part of the house, we showed a picture. And she's like, okay, that shouldn't be a problem, and she came back the next day. And said, well, my son's afraid of your dog, because they seem outside. I said, okay, well, what can we do about that, because they don't go anywhere, they're they're electric fence underneath. But they don't go past our yard, and like I said, the kids will all come to our house, they've been around the dogs, they can. Um, and then I said, well, what can we do to assist the 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 garage would be there? You always see them in the backyard anyways, when they're out there going to the bathroom, they only go out to the bathroom, and then go back cake. And I was like, there, you see them from the rock walls, like, yeah, we see them back there, we just stay in, stay in our backyard, that's fine. I said, what can we do to help, and she said, well, would you mind putting a fence to block the views of my son? I said, we'd be willing to help you anyway. We were trying to work neighborly with them, yeah. That's the only way I came up within the last, you know, couple hours, and then when we pulled up, we just got the letter.
Right, yeah, because I just talked to her prior to that. Um, like I voiced to you guys last night, one of my concerns, and I see you guys know, was. Um, for all of us that have lived here in upstate New York. For as long as we have, um. The car going in and out of there. With all the slush. And all the stuff that builds up under your car in the winter time. Um, it's gonna make it very slippery on the inside, so I talked to them about that last night, but that would be my concern for, you know, with your. Your fall history, um, you know, that you don't get hurt just based on, because it's not a heated structure, what it's gonna do is it's gonna be an ice skating rink at times. And the more that you use salt to abate that. It's gonna eat, it's gonna eat away at that structure pretty quickly, at least. In my opinion, um.
And the other thing I thought of is, is if snow hits that, it's gonna go.
About a car door.
Off the roof and block the entrance to the garage.
It's, I know there's sacks, yeah, I know there will be sack measurement, but I would come down the stairs and and take about three steps to the man door. Um, so, uh.
And we did, we did take your, what you told last night, we're talking, you and two minutes, I kind of looked up. You know, some type of crib, that you can lay down, and you're all in the ramp up, where she would walk up and just drive up. Or even inside, like, the lining of the basin.
And also, as you see in that photograph, the way that I park my car is I back in. And so I would do the same thing with structure, I'd back into the structure, so I'd be going in the main door like this. My door would be right where this gentleman is, open my door, get my car, roll the door, out the door. So, um, there, I understand what you were talking about, but I wouldn't be like walking across the garage if you didn't. To the car, it would be, the the door would be right there, since I back, back into it.
Now to ask the, uh. Other kind of question that might be in some of the board's head, um. Is there any reason, and then again, I'm just trying to think through all variables here, but is there any reason why? One of you couldn't park out in the driveway and let dad park in the garage?
We, it could, it could go in the garage, too, we're trying to get, let's have a pitch.
You're trying to make it so that you can get off.
We get off, and like, we spent, you mentioned, well, what about building off the garage even bigger, and they can, it's still gonna have variance if we did that. We're trying to cover all garage, make it something simple for him to get in and out.
And.
The that's the, the solely spot space, we really have to do that. That will get him in that same.
And also, the reason is, is, uh. They got better cars than I do, so, I mean. I would, I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't have my car in and and Mark's car or Kay's car. Out in the elements, I just.
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to think of every possible scenario.
I mean, one of the things, to me, you can read through the criteria, don't have to answer them now, but just. So the board can think about what these issues are that that this board has to consider by law.
All right. Uh, so here's a question to get you guys on to answer, right, yeah, but these are the questions you guys answered, too, uh, just kind of think about this as you go through it. Uh, number one, whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by people, for the variance. Whether an unregardable change would be produced in character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Whether a requested variance is substantial. Uh, would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? And whether the electric difficulty of self creation? That's a good question. Um, yeah, so. You guys want to. Close the public hearing and make a decision tonight, or do you want to return it and discuss it? Close the public hearing and make a decision tonight, or do you want to return it and discuss it? Are there other questions that we still need to get answered before we can? We can make a a decision? Don't all speak at once?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
I know.
Public hearing is still open?
Yeah.
Make your motion, close the public hearing.
All favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay, there was no other participants when that was still just to wait. And no one is, no one's been on the whole time, I've been watching.
Yeah, I saw your little thing pop up, so I didn't see anybody on there, but. All right, um. All right, so why don't we go through the five questions?
And to clarify that the variance um requested is to allow a setback. Off of the side property line of. One point eight inches, is that what we decided? Yeah, one, one, what did I say?
One point.
Thank you. One point.
So one point eight or one feet, one foot eight inch.
No, uh, with this variance, uh, we're putting in a fence.
Well, you have to answer the criteria. First, and then.
Did, did the question include the fence?
If that's a, it's a condition based upon what the the neighbors requested, right?
If this board decides to put in that condition.
Right.
It's up to the board, it's not the neighbor's decision.
You could say it doesn't need a fence, and you could go like.
Such a request, the request. For the shed included the defense.
Not from, not from the applicants.
So we would, we would, if we wanted to. Agree with what the neighbors said. In here. Then we would have to add it as a condition for the variance, for the variance to be approved, they would have to build that show.
Oh.
For that concern.
Or. If the board decides it, it's not for the neighbor to decide.
Right.
Oh, that's true, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, nice.
I mean, you might allow it or not.
Let's go through the five questions again.
One at a time.
Number one. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance?
Yes, yes.
Okay, say why.
You could go to the backyard.
Yeah, you have to move the door, but yeah, you can place it in the back instead of the. And that's feasible. Because.
What's the question?
Well.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so what?
And the answer is they can put it in the backyard. Right?
Or they.
And they have to move that door. To have the immediate access. Is that feasible? Yeah, that's reasonable, feasible. You know, I don't know the in the layout of the interior of that building. Their home. But it's possible.
There's the two points, what I mean, into that, no.
Okay. Number two. Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Again, what what's the detriment? The character of the neighborhood. What is the character of the neighborhood, I think the detriment, it's the open, I mean, each, so if you put a fence, if you have the condition of the fence being there, it would impact with whatever. House around would have fences. Okay, what about the the garage um units shed? Does anything, does any other property doesn't have a shed like that in that neighborhood? I don't know that I saw a bunch of you guys around or how soon.
Well, they've got sheds.
But now.
They're. In the backyard.
The lawnmower shed.
Yep, they're they are lawnmowers. Um, so there's no other, there's no other car building, whatever you wanna call it.
On the driveway.
In the driveway.
Detached garage. Detached garage.
Detached garage. Is mobile unit.
It it's different because it's a mobile unit. In your estimation, rather than.
Yeah, it's still mobile, yeah.
Right, the detached garage would have a foundation and it would be.
That's right.
Yeah.
I, the question, were there other detached garage that were not mobile?
Uh, say again, were there other detached garage that were not mobile? Sure, if you put in a foundation.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Say. No, I mean there, in that neighborhood. In that neighborhood.
Yes, that's what I asked.
There is the expertise.
Not that I didn't.
No, I, I never said. I drove around.
There's.
We, we, several years ago, we allowed. We allowed a shed similar. Way down. To get the name of the street, but it was in the backyard. Um. And one visible, even from the street, it was in the backyard. And. Down by the dead end.
Before you turn on.
Oh, yeah.
Not dolly, but with the next street.
Next street up.
Sure.
That?
Sure. Somewhere by that one.
Um, anyway, yeah, anyways, there is one. And I know all.
It's not seen by the street.
Not, no, this thing is set away in the backyard.
Yeah. It's just in, it's done. It's incompatible with the neighborhood.
That's the only thing I know.
All right, so.
Is it, is visible from the street, is that a concern?
Yeah.
And it's.
Yeah, it's in front of the house, basically, I mean, it's offset, but.
So number three. Whether requested variance is substantial.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Why?
One feet. One foot eight inches.
It's all you have left.
Yeah, you're at the.
The amount of.
You're, you've maximized the utilizable space in that with the width on that property.
Yeah, well. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
Environmental, no.
No, I don't think so.
Physical?
Physical?
Physical effect on the environment, no.
Or?
No, no, physical. If physical or environmental are two separate things.
Right.
It's not gonna cause a landslide, it's not gonna. Do anything, does it go to the neighborhood?
All right, number five. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty was self created?
Yes. And why is that?
They wanted garage. Yeah.
And. The house did not have a garage?
Yes, the house has, the house has a two par garage, but they're, they need three spaces, so they won't give you a third space. And there was a variance to give the two garage. Just to add the side door a little bit.
Yeah.
Pretty good. Yeah, but yeah, yeah, I.
For that pump out was for them to do it.
Right.
So you wouldn't see the garage doors, each street. And then they, that's two or three orange.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-sixteen or seventeen.
Something like that.
Yeah, sixteen. Okay.
So the answer is yes.
Yeah. So, let's see. We then find the ZBA, after taking into consideration, the public factors finds that. It does or it does not outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood.
The benefit to the.
The benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. Or the benefits, the applicant does not outweigh the detriment for the neighborhood or the community. Or therefore variance for us to be denied.
They follow that. Say that again, I'm sorry.
So your, your option is either, like we normally have here, so the. And first one is the benefit to the application, or the app, the benefit to the application does outweigh, I keep trying to say. Does outweigh the detriment for the neighborhood or community, or. Detriments of the applicant does not outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community, and therefore the variance request was denied.
No, those benefits, I don't.
I'm reading exactly what's written there.
For benefit. The, you said detriment plus. The that, the benefit to the applicant does. Outweighed the detriment to the neighborhood, or the benefit to the applicant does not outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. Actually, you said benefit four months, but that's okay. It is funny to make you say it, right?
I was reading what I saw.
Does not, it's not, does not.
Right. Um.
Sorry to make you mean to.
No.
I, I know, it's fun time.
Um.
Therefore, the variance.
So therefore the variance is denied. Right? What do I need to? I don't need to do that part.
So.
We would have to take a role most of.
You still have to be like a motion?
So.
What, yeah.
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make the motion?
Based upon the findings that were, that were.
Motion.
They're just be based upon the findings.
You can.
Okay, district chairman, based upon the findings of the board. I motion that we deny the variance. For the real property located five one eight eight whole grain family, you know. With for the specific purpose of permitting construction of a twelve by twenty motion, which.
Do it a second.
Oh, I see. Is that, is that, is the wording proper?
Yes, yeah.
It's okay.
All in favor? Anyway, I oppose.
Let me ask some questions if it is denied.
Yeah.
If I have to go backyard or whatnot, what do I need to know so I don't have to come back here and get denied again in front of all you guys today?
Well, I think Tom can cover that.
Yeah, Tom, I can send you an email, or if you want to give my office a call tomorrow, whatever works for you here for you.
Twenty-five foot set, twenty-five foot set back to the rear and fifteen, we all know, on the side.
It, it.
Anything else? Well, I just, I referred it, Tom, just to make sure that. We're, we're correct on that.
You have that correct, twenty-five rear, fifteen of one side.
Signs, yeah.
Yep. And all you would need is a permit through our office.
They need a permit to go in the backyard too?
Yes, just cause. But they wouldn't have to reapply for the permit because they've already applied, you would not, and then you would just change your third act.
Yeah, is uh, is the meeting still open? I do wanna say, I'm gonna go over tooth and nail the section five oh four. I don't know if it's gonna do any good, but I am gonna cover that thing like you would. Because this is five to zero, is. One, one can't see the benefits me. One of you. I can see the benefit to you. Yeah. Yeah, fair enough. But I also can see that you can, uh. It's too long of a walk. It's too long of a walk.
Does that. Fix the door in the back, can you get to it?
It's a structure issue.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I'm sure, no, it's okay, it's all right. We apologize, it didn't, it didn't go anywhere. But I'm gonna work with you on that in back. All right, uh, next agenda item, uh, Daniel Hayes, one twenty-two.
Yes.
Hello, sir.
Very good, are we?
Sorry for the delay. You can hear it just fine, right there, if you wanna stand up that fine too, um, can we get a motion to open the public hearing for uh, a variance for the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-five foot addition? Um, at one twenty-two East Richmond Road?
I make a motion, open the public hearing.
Okay.
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
I oppose. All right. Mr. Hayes.
Yes. Excuse my appearance, I've been going for like sixteen hours.
Yeah, and I buy this for uh.
My name's Daniel Hayes. Uh, I grew up in Syracuse all my life. My father and my uncle built most of our Syracuse. From Bear Road to Taff Road, from Route eleven to Verdant Street, those are all lefts and rights. Of all I've done since I was a little boy, sit in the front seat of a truck and nail boxes, my car seat back in the day before we had car seats. And I watched my father and my uncle with their ten, twelve crews. Build houses, put footers in, put block in, build houses, top to bottom, chimney to. As I grew up my life. That's all I've done is. Build houses with my father. And I stayed away from the business because it's one of the worst businesses I think in the world back then. Always chasing the dollar and trying to get paid. Everybody and brother never wanted to pay for materials, never wanted to pay for what true craftsmen were like in the, in the trade. That being said, I know a lot of carpenters in this town, a lot of them are my very good friends. And they're helping me with everything I'm doing on the structure. Um, after two divorces, this is gonna be my forever home. No more of that, I'm trying to change a house that was a little tape cod into a. It was rundown, trying to turn it into a very nice dwelling again. Um. The house originally is only thirty by twenty-four. Uh, it's me and my wife and my son. Which I'm quite proud of, uh. Uh, I work for the company that everyone hates, National Bridge, I run the largest garage in central New York. I've been charged with three hundred fifty piece equipment, biggest equipment for the state. My son goes to U B, is electrical engineer, finishing his last semester. Uh, I just got a job at National Bridge and doing his masters at Albert. Um. This house is too small, that's why this addition is, is to help my son, me, and my wife to have a little bit more room now. Um, that. This process for the variance is unexpected for me. Um, I have to say, Tom has done an excellent job in helping me getting through the steps on this. I've never actually been to anything like this or done. Any of the paperwork for this, when I was with my father and my uncle. They had workers and people that took care of all the land, the land and the. The driveways and the gas lines and the sewer lines and. Power lines, all that was all taken care of by someone else. I was the laborer per se, followed blueprints and built. Um. So with that being said. Tom's done, like I said, done a great job helping me getting through all the process, I filled all my paperwork out. Did everything like I was supposed to do. I never asked. Uh, Tom. Um, for the permit. Uh, I just presumed it got mailed to you like I did the last time I did mentally, I did a structure on my property. Uh, two weeks in, two, two and a half weeks in, I I get a phone call from Tom saying to me. That there's a problem, you're gonna have to get a variance, which I didn't expect, I figured everything was all set. And that being said, I came in with my letter from my neighbor, which Tom told me I had to have. My neighbor is one of my family, basically members of my entire life, his name is Albert Flea, Butch Flea. His mother and father and my mother and father used to break ground. And. Their parents and my parents, grandparents, we'll say their grandparents. Used to have. Bars. Down behind Rock, Rockwell on Fayette Street and the old Ukrainian area before it changed. How it is down there. Um, my family has a lot of heritage around here. Mr. Kelly, you remind me of my grandfather, if I brought pictures and you look just like him, but anyways. Um.
I know.
He's only twenty-five.
So, uh.
I, I probably do, if you're, if you're. Parents, if your father and uncle.
Yep, Lenny Hayes and DJ Hayes.
I may have known.
My uh, Uncle Lenny was also the chief of police for uh, for Syracuse. When he retired. Yeah.
When did they build?
Between fifty-five and sixty-six, sixty-seven.
Oh, sure.
If you were to look at the houses like, uh, I grew up on Calmer Drive. Uh, which, again, I know a lot of, this whole town is, I know so many people who are like root for my life from Jim Fisher. From uh, Ted Marsh. From uh. Uh. Oh, gosh, I mean, there's.
Yeah.
Brain farting out the top of my head here, but, and these are all. Brain farting out the top of my head here, but these are all men I grew up as mentors in my life, always did a day's work for days paid. That all being said. Uh I'm Columnar Drive, if you were to go to the third house in, it's one of the largest houses in that area. It was a forty by sixty with eighteen foot cathedral ceilings. It's got the only house with five foot panes of glass double stacked on top of a pair of. Blue stone steps that go up in front to a two tier windows goes down. There is a eighteen foot fireplace in the center of the house. She walked around and my father built all that house. With his men and his design. If you were to go on the other boulevard. To go up past Believers Chapel on the right hand side, you'll see almost a duplicate. All those houses were the starter homes. That they started doing in that territory, from the Hiller Heights all the way back going through. Those are all older.
So.
Places, but that being said, on my property, um everything that I've done, I've tried to do by the book. Followed by whatever the laws are. I don't wanna cut any corners. I do everything as I'm supposed to do, so. That being said. How can I answer your question?
So just so, thank you, well done then, but the, so he did start on it, um Tom issued a stop order. Condition upon this variance being approved. So that will basically, the structure is going to go out the back and. Same width as the current structure.
Yes.
Just going backwards and then I know one of the concerns of the neighbor. Um was that he just wanted to make sure that the drainage of that new structure did not go toward his property, but. Uh Mr. Hayes informed me yesterday when I spoke with him that it's gonna run perpendicular or I'm sorry, um. Parallel, word.
Straight up there.
Right up the back by the uh the barn that he's got up there.
The elevation is two, five and six foot downhill from the house.
No.
So I, when I shoot my son's line out the back of the actual the house, I'll bury it. Two foot, I still have more than upgrade to be able to get to an open swell, which is between. The back row of houses and my house. It's already been built into that when the housing was put in. In the street behind me, all properties had a swell in the back. And that water all runs all the way back down through and down towards Manoa where the parade of homes were. All that is where the water runs down to that.
So, do you? And then I think I asked you, you were gonna, when all is said and done, you're gonna match the site in and the.
Everything's gonna be all new siding.
Yep.
And a new roof, so it all matches uh all the way around, so it doesn't look so degraded. Uh there's a fireplace, it's the old style. Tin box that they painted red brick sign, that's coming off. It's gonna be no more fireplace, that structure inside is being removed. And then the inside will get some new sheet rock and and so forth to make everything is nice and new inside as well as outside. I want it to be a new home.
That's what I wanted to clarify is the external structure, the existing structure, he's gonna replace that siding and. The windows to match with what he's building.
Yeah, that's all. Even the front porch, the sign is gonna be coming off. That's gonna be removed.
Alright, carry.
Well, that was my, I mean, I, when I looked at when I was. Go by there yesterday, so I'm glad that you clarified that you're gonna basically make it a new home.
That's my plan.
Yeah.
Claire.
Mister Kelly. Uh is this a one story or two story?
One story.
Yeah, I heard my asking, this was in the.
That was from the first blueprints I had when I was, when I was actually thinking of doing a two story.
Yeah.
And I had talked to Tom about it, but the first story was exactly what I'm doing now. So that the second story is not being used in the actual program. That actual picture is, the second, the second half of that's not being used.
What was it you told me yesterday too with the block that you were doing? You said you upgraded it.
The the cement block is is uh all core filled, rerouted. Uh it's got rerouted, all the footers too. I went to thirty five hundred pound concrete and all the footers instead of twenty five hundred pound, which is spec. I put drainage on the outside and the inside and the sun pump hole will be on the bed on the, it'd be the south wall. Everything will be black bonded on the outside. It'll be have two inches of styrofoam insulation. All the way around the outside of the structure. I'd like to do the whole structure, but it depends on time and. And uh what whether, whether at this point, I'm kinda getting caught between a rock and a hard spot, because I'm, I'm also trying to, I don't know how it goes. I have to find out. I wanna put solar on the top of the house. Um I would also like to put solar down the barn. So I can, you know, National Grid offers a lot of incentives, so I wanna get into the program with that. It's high enough where no one's gonna see it. It's not gonna be a detriment to people. And I mean, where I'm gonna put the solar is gonna be on the actually east and south end of the home, so you won't see it from the front. Or from the west side, you won't see any solar.
Well, when you upgrade that or when you redo the roof and sprint, have them look at the, what is it? They have to upgrade the bracing. Because some of the older structures, the way that they're centered, they need to have that ability to hold that extra weight for the um.
Just to give a heads up, I'm I'm kind of OCD. So the the foundation is overkill. The flooring is gonna be a bowling alley. When I get done, it's gonna have hardwoods all through the whole house. With a racetrack around the dining room table for anybody to come up inside. I'm gonna have sixteen inch on center trust is gonna be designed so it'll be able to hold the Mack truck on the top of it. I'm not just cutting any corners on this. If I had my weight, it'll be tied back twice, just to be able to keep this structure extremely tight.
I've got.
Well, the whole thing is, I wouldn't think so. If you work for National Grid, you get free electric and free uh gas. It doesn't quite work there.
Warren, questions?
You were the homeowner when the whole barn was built, right?
Yes, sir.
And it probably wasn't built until you had a building permit, right?
Correct.
So I'm kinda curious why you. Put a foundation in and all that before you have a building permit.
Well, like I said, the timeline is what's made this to be where it's at right now. I filled out my application, got all the paperwork together, did all my blueprints, got that to Tom. Tom told me, you're good to go. Now that to me means that I'm all set. Now I, I did not. I did not wait for a permit. I figured it was gonna be in the mail and it'd be no problem to keep going with the structure because I'm trying to get this thing in and topped before the snow came. So. If there's anyone at fault there, that would be me not asking the question, Tom. Do I have a permit con? And that point was is he's gonna check the paperwork and was gonna send a permit. Well, two weeks later. Actually, like two and a half weeks later. Uh I get the phone call, give him, I give him a call, I give him a call, he have a problem. So now it gets stretched further and I'm already in the process of trying to put this place up before the weather gets really bad. With that all being said. Just like anybody else, I work ten to twelve hours a day. I can't reschedule my kids with their time off and my friends to be up there to help out. Because this whole thing is being done with trying to teach my son how to put a house up, like I was taught. As well as having friends calling in favors to have them there to help me do the structure when I can. So I'm limited on certain times also, so I didn't think there was gonna be that big of an issue with this, being that I'm going straight back with the structure. I'm not getting infringing on any property lines. Everybody seemed to be in a, in a happy place until Tom had talked to a lawyer and said that, no, we're gonna have to get a a variant, something like. Okay, so now I, that, at that point, he says to me, if you get a letter from your neighbor stating that there's everything's okay. Which I did that next night and drop it off to him before noon the following day. Um and filled out this extra X, Y, Z, I don't remember what that part was, and then given another hundred bucks. That this variance should be able to go through and shouldn't have a problem. I said, okay. So, but he never said I was in, was gonna get a variance. He never said that I was gonna get a permit. If anything there, it was on me. You know, by assuming that this isn't gonna be a problem. So.
Yeah.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
You, you're on a subject tank out there?
No, sewers, sorry.
You're on sewers out there?
Yes. I was the only guy in the street that actually wanted to have uh natural gas put in back when I bought the house.
Yeah.
I had to fight to get that to come in.
So they do have.
Runs to, because they they ran it from uh Fremont back.
Correct.
When they built Manoa Farms. Correct. Okay, then it comes out on uh comments to back over to the. They're the Jets.
Okay, okay, yeah. Okay, well, that takes care of it.
Yeah, so there is no.
Actually, my mistake, I'm doing what I did. And starting on the house so soon without having a piece of paper in hand.
I just wanna understand, you came and talked to Tom first.
Yes.
And Tom said, it's okay, but he didn't tell you that you needed a variance right off the bat.
No, no, sir. But. Two weeks later, two and a half weeks later, he did find out the information that needed to be happening, that I needed a variance, and he did follow up for me.
Is the siding gonna be the same?
No, I'm gonna go with Dutch lamp. It's gonna be uh same kinda coloring to match the barn.
Okay.
So it all looks, all in the same, I wanna be uniform.
You, you understand why you need a variance?
Well, from now I understand. I I thought the the setback on that side of the house was fifteen feet. I'm being told it's not, and I, as I'm as true, I've never measured. Because I've never thought there'd be a problem if you're going straight back with your structure.
Right.
I'm not infringing on anyone's property line, and there's no structure there for water to be shedded off onto, so there's no house, there's no.
Right, and you're, you're, you're good. What is the barrier? What is it?
So it is what the question was, was it's not, it is becoming more nonconforming. By the addition of the structure, but the nonconformity is not increasing. As in, he's not getting closer to the property.
What's the setback on the side? Yeah.
But the.
So if you were fifteen feet off. The lot side, you know, the lot line, you'd be, you know, that'd be a new point of this.
Correct.
You're what, eight, eight feet or something?
Yes, sir.
That's the only reason you gotta come in or not the only reason, but.
Right.
That's, uh, just so you understand, but, yeah.
So it's already a nonconforming structure.
Yeah.
But but Tom was trying to explain that it's, it's increasing the nonconformity by building on to it. Correct, so that's why it comes to variance.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
But it's also a reason why you may find. It's not as change to the neighborhood, right?
Not a change in stuff when you go to the criteria, so that's. Like me.
Does anybody have any other questions?
So I just wanna make sure I understand you, you're. If this gets approved. The entire house will look the same, and you're gonna make windows on the existing house. You will upgrade those.
Yes.
So the, of the new addition of the house, it'll look like it was, yes, like it was never. It was built that way from the beginning. I'm not building a shack. I'm gonna build a.
Yeah, anybody else? Done, continues. Alright. Any other questions? Mister Leonard? I don't think so. Ladies? Alright, uh yeah, actually, could we, uh, as I said, there's no other comments or concerns, uh. Alright. Very excited. All in favor?
Alright.
I oppose. Okay. Uh so now what we're gonna do is just like we did uh with the last uh applicant, we're gonna go through these five questions. Absolutely, you worked on it. Alright. So. Number one. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. No, because the way that it is right now. In the current house, it follows the property or the uh structure same line. And even though the current house is nonconformant, it just extends the nonconformity, uh conformity.
At the foundation, it's already here.
Yes.
Well, I think doesn't count.
Mind that, but it it does follow the standard property line, so it's not correct. Yeah. Um whether undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or nearby properties.
No.
Well, and if anything, that's a positive because he's making that house look a whole lot better, which benefits both him and his neighbors.
I think also, um, it's not visually different from what the people see because of the line. Already.
Yeah, the sightline.
And it can't, also can't be seen from the road. It's also architecturally incredible. Would, would everyone agree with those three?
Yeah. Alright, number three, whether the requested variance is substantial. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just based on the, the variance of the exact report.
It's more than fifteen. Yeah.
Yeah, uh would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? No.
No.
And he's accounting for the drainage, because. Alright, uh number five, whether life's difficulty was self-created.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He wants to put on another picture.
On the horse street.
This is recorded.
That's okay.
You can watch it on Facebook later.
I bought like four houses for other people already.
Alright, so. Go through that part. DB after taking into consideration above five factors finds that either. The benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm not reading the second one. Alright, the DB further finds that a variance for.
Eight feet.
Is it eight feet on the dot?
The variance is six foot orange.
I'm sorry, six foot four inches. Um is the minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety and welfare of the community. There's a agreement that there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a fact to action on secret and no further review is required. Based on our discussion, would somebody like to make a motion to approve or deny said variance?
Mister Chairman, I moved the Sony Ward Grant area variance to Daniel Hayes for the real property located at one two two Richmond Road East. East Syracuse, New York, one three oh five seven. This variance is being granted for the specific purpose of permitting the construction of a twenty four foot by twenty five foot addition. Thereby modifying the side yard setback with fifteen feet. That of eight point eight, eight inches, leaving a variance of six feet four inches.
I like to add, that's a one story addition.
Okay.
Oh, second, do I add on there that he's gonna match the siding and windows?
Yes, I.
Yes.
Where we have our conditionals, we're all in there.
No problem.
Motion that we make conditions that it's a one story structure in addition, that it matches the siding with color of one.
And that's.
That was.
Yes.
I have one quick question. Would you remove the existing asset? Are you gonna be doing anything that's gonna put a group?
All across.
Alright, we ready? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries?
Yeah.
So the uh they will be. You wanna explain that in the building permit? I'm getting done with you tomorrow.
Okay.
I wanna, well, because I'll get, I wanna make sure that we get rid of the two story one and all the paperwork that's removed from it, so. Any acceptance paperwork that will be noted. And Tom will get it all squared away with you so you can get back to working on it.
Just trying to get it bugged up.
That's true.
Thanks. And then in the springtime, I'll finish it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you to do the whole thing.
Well, if everything goes as I planned by the end of summer, I have it all locked up. I wanna be tied in and everything done before the next month.
But within a year.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, well. Too late, yeah, it's too late. Yeah, we had what we granted.
Oh, it takes.
And and people rag them out, three, four years and a year from the neighborhood.
Based on our conversation after, he wants to bonus.
There has to be any forms, being that we're doing the work, we talk in our. There must be any forms, being that we're doing the work, we're talking, you're not a contractor.
I already went through some of this with Tom, like deploying. The materials, it's gotta be under a certain one dollar, the labor is pretty much, pretty much, that's why I'm off. Friends, later, I do things for them, they do things for me, there's no actual dollars to be changed.
With the contract, you did workers' cost, though.
It's the BP one form which states, I can read it off here.
So while you're reading that, um, can we make an amendment to the, uh, prior agenda? And we just said to add in there, or to the motion of the denial, um, so. Did we just add that there is agreement that there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a fact-to-action secret? And no further reviews required.
That would be a motion to amend that resolution.
Yes.
By Tim? Second, second.
All in favor? Aye.
When you said, let's start with number one on the agenda, it was actually number four. I don't want that.
Oh.
Yeah.
I, I think I said the first item, but yeah, you're correct, number one is the.
Yeah, can I ask your question? One point. So what's on the, I have a permit and this is all. Um, I gotta just, I gotta, you're gonna have to get it in the morning because Lee's not gonna be there, she put this G W on that. Um, I wanna make sure that the acceptance document, what we had in there, has been noted, so all the acceptance paperwork that I have to stand for is. You know, and I will take time off to come be true with you. And do whatever I gotta do, whatever you need me from.
Would, let me know. Somebody like to make a motion to return, Warren, to adjourn. Thirty seconds. All in favor? Alright, opposed? Next time, Kerry is bringing back.
Thank you everybody for your time, for your help, I really appreciate it. So, okay.
Thank you very.
You're right.